Now I'll call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Marshalltown City Council. We are in City Hall in Council Chambers at 10 West State Street. The date is October 8th, 2018, and it's 5:30 PM. Mayor and City Council welcome comment from the public during discussion of any of the agenda items. You are required, please, to step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and to limit the time used to present your remarks in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. Please speak clearly and direct your comments to the mayor and city council and not to any councilor specifically. It is a discretion of the council and mayor to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. So I call this meeting to order, and would you please rise with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And sitting in for Madam Clerk is our City Administrator. So City Administrator Kinser, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Cahill?
Here.
Gowdy? Absent.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Lamer?
Here.
Martin is absent. And Weirin?
Here. And now is the time for mayor, council, and administrator comments. Are there comments you'd like to share tonight?
I would. I had the pleasure of working on Sunday with members of the UAW at the UAW Hall as they were doing their food box to help people who were affected by the tornado. And they have been doing this since early August, and they just have a slick system where they have put together or they have items that people can come in and select from, and I was just the smoothness of the operation, and they've helped up to 90 families each week. They do it every Sunday. So it is a real service that they gave, have given to our community. I think while I was there, I also heard someone else from Lenox was getting called back to work. So that was another very positive part of that experience that I was able to have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, and thank you to the UAW for their service.
Exactly.
That's great. Anybody else from the council? Okay. City Administrator?
None, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you. And I have nothing to share except dropping my pen. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Oh, minus number five, please. Minus number five.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Okay, I will. Thank you. The consent agenda passed. Would you please read the items that just passed?
Yes. Approving the council meeting minutes of September 24th and October 1st. Approving the bill list in the amount of $2,267,595.32. Receipt of building permit report for September 2018. A resolution declaring a parks and recreation vehicle and a parks and recreation mower surplus and accepting disposal of each item. A resolution accepting a bid of $73,700 from Iowa demolition to demolish the City Hall annex and accepting the actual cash value payment for the damage.
Thank you. So first time of business, I will entertain a motion to accept Resolution 2018 hyphen 174, accepting an actual cash value payment of $692,571.96 for the senior citizens' building.
So moved.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Madam, I requested this item be pulled because I'm not the smartest guy in the world, but I have some serious questions. I have the cash, the values that we've been paying the insurance company on that was provided by the finance department. And the senior citizens' center building was, we were paying on a value of $3,345,586 is what we were paying a premium on, and they say the cash value is only $692,000. What happened to the other 2.8 million? If they're not willing to pay us a decent price for this building, I think we ought to have them just pay the hundred, the million and four and restore it.
To answer your question, Councilmember Lamer, so the building was not deemed a total loss, and so that's why the replacement cost that you see on the insurance policy is not being offered here, and only $1.2 million in replacement cost is being offered. If we replace it, then we would get the 1.2 million, and that's putting it back to what it was at the time of the tornado. To get to the actual cash value cost, they do a depreciation by 40% because if you're not replacing it, they're going to give you the actual cash value, and so that's where that figure of $692,000 has come from.
Then why are we paying for 3.3 million on the insurance policy?
Because that is believed to be the true replacement cost if the entire structure was damaged. The entire structure was not damaged in the tornado, so therefore the replacement cost that's been offered is 1.2 million.
Okay. Who determined the percent? Did they determine it, or did we determine it?
They determined that. So they have assigned an adjuster who is working with all of our claims on all of our city buildings, and he basically reviews the damage and assigns sort of a replacement cost to the damage that is there. And so that's where that $1.2 million came from, and then the 40% I believe is an ICAP policy to depreciate by that. It's the same thing with the City Hall annex, that that's where, that amount was depreciated by 40% to basically determine what that would be because we're not replacing it.
So have we got a, have we got a cost to fix that building up?
No, that was not your direction at the last council meeting. Your direction at the last council meeting was to move forward with the demolition.
I understand that. I didn't, that isn't what my question, my question is, did we get a cost to replace that, to repair that building?
No, and I go back to, there's actually two meetings where you did not provide direction to move forward with that, one in the summertime before the tornado, and then most recently the last council meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there further comments on this issue?
Did we have any additional feedback from the meetings last week that were to occur from the Coliseum?
Yes.
Discussion?
Myself and councilmembers Hoop and Gowdy met with three members of the senior citizens' board to have that conversation about locating the senior citizens' center into the Coliseum, and that was a positive meeting where I felt that ultimately the direction would probably be coming back to you sometime in the month of November, if not earlier, as to whether or not that was a proposal that you would want to accept as we would talk about that building further. In that meeting also, we talked about the idea of doing sort of a larger analysis of recreational programming within the community for seniors, that there's multiple entities providing this, and are we meeting the needs of the senior population, as well as then a possible way that the city could contract with a private entity to provide shuffleboard to the entire public and not just to a select group of people. And so those were all things that were discussed during that meeting, and Councilmember Hoop can add anything that he'd like, but I felt that we came away from that with a positive response.
Yeah, I agree. There was positive stuff talked about.
So does it sound like there's a way forward there to look at the, not only the programming but also, and meeting the needs more, but also having a facility, you know, either part of the Coliseum or, part of the Coliseum and something else if we needed it?
The possibility was there, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
For both upstairs and downstairs?
Say it again. Over here, we have an upstairs group that provides meals, and we have the downstairs senior citizen. Is that, was that part of the conversation?
No. And there's, the thing to keep in mind is that's two separate organizations.
I know.
And so the upstairs organization we've been talking to, they've been looking at space throughout the community, and one of the spaces we've been talking about is the second floor of City Hall. And so this was just a conversation with the senior citizens' center, which is the downstairs group. So two separate conversations that have been happening with two separate organizations.
Well, anybody think about, we're going, I understand there, we have a proposal for the police station, but why aren't we looking at the police station for the senior citizens' center, and we could put both of them in the same location?
The one thing that I would say to you, and I think this was a discussion prior to even moving forward with the bond to build a new police and fire station, was the significant cost that the city was going to need to incur to try and fix that up. The idea of selling the police station is that we're no longer a landlord and that that gets us out of a building situation which was going to have some significant costs for us to move forward with.
Well, last time I brought up the fact that that building needs a ton of work to put, and the people that are wanting to move in there, they don't have the money to spend on it, so something doesn't make sense. It just doesn't, just doesn't work in my mind. I'm sorry. If we can't afford to fix it up for our own people to use a private, non-for-profit that doesn't have hardly any money, how are they going to fix it up so they can use it?
Well, so let's keep it back on senior citizens' center.
Yeah, I am, I am. But I'm trying to see if there isn't some other way that we can make this thing work because these people, they need as much care and as much money spent on them as we're spending on everybody else. And I can, I understand that the Coliseum is a good location, but then we have all the young people around, and they're concerned about safety and those kind of things. Maybe we ought to be looking at either redoing their building or finding another building that we own that we can put them in and offer the same services, and we got a building right next to City Hall. If we're going to sell it to somebody else to use, why can't we use that and remodel it and make it so they got it to use? It just makes sense to me that we already got it, and rather than, well, I'll quit.
Well, so we're still back to, do we accept this payment?
Yes.
For the senior citizens' center?
Yes. Understand.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other council discussion before we, okay. Public comment, please, on this issue. Go ahead and come on up to the mic and just state your name and address for the record again. Thank you.
First of all, my name is Jim Landt. I live at 610 North Fourth Avenue, and I don't use the senior citizens' building at all, but I was approached to come here and kind of represent them to a certain extent, and it just doesn't make sense that, just like Lamer said, we're paying this money for the big dollar, $3 million, and we're only getting $600,000 out of it. It don't make sense. And what you're saying is that it's 100% replacement cost. It don't make sense to settle for $600,000 when we've been paying all this premium out here. What are we going to do with the $600,000? Are we going to put it back into these people's building so they have a building to work off of and do their entertaining and stuff like that? Or what are we doing? I mean, there's no answers. I mean, nobody's telling me if they're going to build a building, or what are you going to do with this money? You going to put it in your pocket, just spread it around all different departments, or what? What's the plan with the $600,000?
It's my understanding, if I may answer, ma'am?
Sure.
That it's going to take $500,000 of it to tear the building down and get the site ready. Isn't that, wasn't that an estimate you had?
The estimate was 500,200,000, and that's only an estimate until bids come in.
Okay, let me ask you this.
There will be money left.
Why don't, at least $100,000 or so left? That's not enough money to build a building for them. Why don't we make the insurance company fix the building?
Well, again, going back to the...
What's in it for, there's got to be something in it for somebody because why are we jumping to conclusions when we've been paying premiums on a $3 million building and going to sell them for $600,000? That don't even make sense. I don't even do my checkbook right. I mean, it'll, just like you said, you don't have to be a rocket scientist to figure this out, and we got you guys elected in office to figure this stuff out for us? It's election time coming up next month.
I think to clarify, Mr. Lamer's statement about the replacement cost of the building being 3 million is correct, and that is if the whole building were damaged.
I understand what you said.
And so the replacement cost that, the whole building was not damaged.
That's right.
So we're talking about 1.2 million versus 692,000.
That's right. At 1.2 million is a lot different than 600,000 in my books. So why don't you fix the building?
So City Administrator, I guess maybe to recap for some individuals who haven't been entitled to the entire conversation, 1.2 million gets it up to where it was, which was losing money from a budget perspective from the city, so we were paying to even keep the building open at that point. Maybe just refresh some of the statistics.
Yes, this was actually, prior to the tornado, I had brought this before you with a plan to renegotiate the leases of the two entities that were there to basically have the building shut down December 31st of 2019 because it is losing about $30,000 a year in utilities. One of the things that has been on our radar much prior to the tornado was the possible loss of property tax backfill, which is going to have an impact on our general fund, which is where that $30,000 loss was at as well. And so now that looks a lot different because, you are correct, Councilmember Isom, to get it to a replace, a replacement cost gets it back to where it was in terms of a building that would still probably be losing money because the utility and insulation issues were not going to be fixed as part of that. So that was one of the things that we sort of had to look at a little bit further in advance here as to whether or not this, you know, ahead of 2020, was this the building to keep, knowing that the direction had been to negotiate leases to basically go through December 31st, 2019, and we would continue to look further. There was no direction in those previous conversations to hire any sort of consultant to start to put together any sort of cost estimate, and so the direction that's here is the direction that we've been moving. Another thing to say is 1.2 million will also not get the building to be code compliant because of the nature of the damage. It does have to be brought up to current building codes, and that is not something that is included in that 1.2 million dollars. So there was some other additional cost there that we would expect just based on what we know about the age of the building. That's not included in that replacement cost estimate.
Okay, my, I understanding what you're saying is that you're, now you're blaming it right back on to, it's not energy efficiently, it hasn't been kept up, or hasn't been brought up to the standards, and it's not efficiently. I understand what you're saying, but whose fault's that? I say that's the city's fault. Don't you take care of your own house when you have problems with your house and stuff? Don't you take care?
Can I interject?
Sure. Go ahead.
I think that I speak for all the council members, that we all care and want to provide services for our senior population. I think that we, in looking at this before the tornado and as the tornado, this is not the most cost-effective way to do it. We know through the tornado and through possible loss of backfill money that our taxes and things are going to be affected. Our tax base has been affected. I feel that you hired us to be good fiscal, or that you voted for our council members to be good fiscal and fiscally responsible with the city's money. This is an area that we feel we can provide ample quality programming and facilities for our seniors by combining them with other facilities that we have. We are just trying to be good fiscal and fiscally responsible with the money of the city, of the people of the city.
I mean, it just, it just don't pence well to me. I mean, it's just that, I think all of you guys can run a checkbook better than this. I really do. I got faith in you, or else I wouldn't have voted for some of you. But it just doesn't make sense, and you have no conclusion of what you're going to do to help these people out. I mean, you're just, you're just throwing them out into a bullring.
We have committed ourselves, we have committed ourselves to do that.
Yep. So I think it's time for the next public comment, sir. Thank you.
Okay, but it don't make sense.
First off, I'm sorry I shared this.
Pull the microphone over, please.
Okay. Linda Clark, 306 South Second Avenue. Everyone on this council has and knows my position on the building, and we, a number of us, have gotten petition signers, and as soon as I open this up, I would like to read this. "We, the people pursuant constitution of the state of Iowa, I, Linda Clark, 306 South Second Avenue, Marshalltown, Article I, Bill of Rights, Section 20, and on behalf of others present, we have 421 petition signatures to object to demolishing the senior citizen building located at 20 East State Street would have them entered into the record of the October 8th, 2018 city council meeting. Whereas this building has been recognized as senior citizens' center and Marshalltown seniors, among other entity, in historic locations since 1920 and also used by family members, some out of state, while visiting the city along with many individuals from surrounding towns." Article I, Section 2, Iowa Constitution. Do believe this city property should be retained, Article I, Section 25 of the Iowa Constitution. The state historian Laura Sodowsky stated, "There is a technical advisory network to evaluate." Kristin Vander Molen on vacation until October 11th, 2018. Her telephone number is 515-281-4228. It's attached in my packet. Information contained on the United Way site for senior citizens' center located at 20 East State Street is also attached. I apologize that given to anyone that petition signatures was not received as time limited, as well to those who failed to include all their information on the petition, but I have counted their name to the best of my ability, which I believe shows there is a large number of individuals interested in the outcome of this building in sight. And as two of us learned from Councilman Hoop, the building never was condemned, and I have photographs that they said if I put it over here, that it will show.
Yes. Mrs. Bonheimer is taking care of that for you.
Okay, because these were taken right after the tornado. I was in that building, as this council all knows, along with the person that took these. Is that going to work? Because we can do it from school, like this.
Put it down there.
Center it like that? Okay. Is that getting everything? We are looking at the stage area. You can see here, the stage has not been damaged. This, the floor, looks good. Okay. Here is another one.
Was that the upstairs or the downstairs?
This is upstairs.
Those were the upstairs. Thank you.
This is upstairs where the dances and all the things were taking place, and you can see the tile and the ceiling is in good shape. Here is the door going south. This is the area where the area, the NEI 3 on aging was working, providing meals using this, with a complete working kitchen, by the way. I stated that before. Okay, that one, and this one, I think I shared that one. We have them. These were done after. So it shows, it shows the floor is in good shape, and it's never been condemned. Anyone can look through the window down below and see, and it was newly painted down there. To me, it didn't look like it has received any damage whatsoever, and until someone goes in there and looks to see. We do have funding, that there have been many places that have been giving funding to do a new vision, and I think we need to have a new vision. That building could be on the historical registry, and it's in the proximity of the Sauer House and the Binford House and the Cartwright Pavilion. And so actually, being downstairs in this building, that building over there is in way better shape than the downstairs of this building. This one that's set on them, placked down there in 1921, that building over there is in better shape. Needs a roof, needs a wiring, and there have been contractors that have approached that said they would like to give estimates on restoration, and 1.2 million, I think, would be silly not to take advantage of that, to bring that up, when nobody has went in there, nobody's given direction to the council to do that. But I want to let other people talk, but I do want to enter these, and since the clerk is not here, who would receive these 421 signatures?
City Administrator Kinser.
And I apologize that this last one came in late. And I didn't have enough staple to go through it downstairs. They did it, but they're, they're all there. So... On behalf of the city of Marshalltown, which I have been an advocate for and plan to keep doing so, and I would like to let everyone take a remembrance of Bob Schubert because he was first ward council, and I know that man very well. He would have been going door to door down there, making sure that individuals in his ward who didn't have computers and things would have been getting services. Some of them don't know that there are monies available, that MICA and stuff can help them. I drive down there and I see them trying to do things on their own, and so I know Mr. Schubert and everybody else knew him well. He helped everybody in the whole town, not just his ward. And so I would encourage everyone on this council to be looking out for the city of Marshalltown and all the people, not just some that want to pocket money for their own gain.
Thank you, Ms. Clark, and I want to commend Councilwoman Cahill. I'm going door to door and being out in her ward because I know you have been. Hello, Ms. Waltermeyer.
Hi, Kathy Waltermeyer, Marshalltown. I want to try a math problem too, okay? One of the things you seem to focus on is that it costs about $30,000 above the rents of the senior center to keep it going. Marshalltown has about, I'm giving rough numbers, 26,000 people. About 25% of the people in Marshalltown are 55 and older. Now, if you work that out, that comes out to about $4 per senior per year to keep the senior center open and going. That's really not that expensive. But I do have a question about the 690-whatever-thousand. Can you give me, not nickel and dime amounts, but $100,000, $10,000 amounts, what is it going to cost to do the parts that you have to do to take a building that size down? 22,000 square feet, I think Mike said, and half a block long. You must have a breakdown of that.
Yeah. For taking it down, we were given an estimate.
Yes, because that's what we're talking about, isn't it?
Yeah. 500 to 600,000.
Okay, no, no. Per item. I mean, what's the cost to hire someone to do whatever you have to do? What's a landfill charge?
That's, we're, we're working with an engineering firm to put together those cost estimates to refine us from 500 to 600,000 dollars, and so that's not something that we have anybody on board yet to do that, but we're working to find somebody to do that, to put together the plans and specifications for demolition where quantities would be estimated.
Okay, so what are the five big-ticket items in doing something like that?
I can't, I can't tell you that.
No, I mean demolition, landfill, what else is there? I'm just curious.
Backfilling of the site, site restoration. I don't, any environmental concerns?
Asbestos was removed about 20 years ago.
Okay, so...
So I know that's...
But if there's a boiler with oil in it, anything else that could have been kept there.
The boiler's been gone 20 years.
It's, it's, I mean, it's, you're talking about, you know, as you said, landfill, the demolition and site restoration are going to be your, your big things.
Will, will those be broken down and passed on to the papers so that everyone in the community can see where that money is going, so we know where the 500 or 600,000, as this gentleman was wondering where it was going to go?
Well, we can certainly talk about that with the engineering, who, engineering firm who will be preparing the plans and specifications, if indeed that's the way the council goes.
And I obviously support the senior center. I do know it loses money. There are other programs in the community that probably also cost money to run. Does the swimming pool make money every year? Does the Coliseum make money every year? Do the parks make money every year? Does the Coliseum make money every year? Most of the things that make life worth living don't make money. That's what we pay for when we pay our taxes. Thank you.
So I just want to recap a couple things. The building is not condemned, was never condemned. We know that, but we were looking, you know, months ago at ending the lease anyway, so this is really, we were looking at other options for the senior center earlier, before the tornado. Because I think we can really get a better product, much better facility for our seniors than that building over there. My two cents. Okay. Any other comments before we vote? This is on whether to receive the 692,000, that's number five, 692,57196 for the senior citizens' building. So we have a motion and a second, and I'm seeing no one approach, so roll call, please.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
No.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Okay, passed four to one. And we are up to, I will entertain a motion to accept the wayfinding master plan.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, and Mr. Byers is here.
Thank you all. I'm going to try to find this here. So I'm here to provide a... So I'm here to provide an overview of the wayfinding signage master plan that we are basically completed. We started this effort this past spring, and this is really the result of a recommendation of several planning efforts identified as a community need to come up with a more cohesive branding solution to signage throughout town. Our schedule and outreach process adapted to the events that followed after the tornado. We had kind of changed our approach a bit to our outreach process. We had a steering committee in place of 10 representatives representing various committees, the Downtown Business District, Convention and Visitors Bureau, Vision Marshalltown, city staff, just to name a few. But they were instrumental in critiquing our work specifically and providing direction as to how we should proceed with this signage package for Marshalltown. The report is structured as the table of contents is shown here. We have some introductory information. We go into theme development, talk about the results of some visual preference survey that we completed with the committee, a wayfinding questionnaire. We go into mapping, and we've created some pretty robust maps to provide the city that will be in GIS format to allow the city to make adjustments to this and have these things grow over time. And then the last chapter is the overall signage concepts, cost summary, that type of information. So a little bit about the background of this. Like I stated, this was really targeted to create a cohesive platform for displaying wayfinding. We started by looking at, you know, various examples of what other communities have done, other sites, trying to kind of educate our steering committee and try to learn what people are drawn to and what, you know, the community members think is representative of Marshalltown. We, you know, like I said, creating that cohesive platform was number one. We wanted something that was, you know, right scaled for different solutions. The existing signage in most cases was outdated, a lot of it was inaccurate, and overall just was inconsistent. The overarching goal is a family of signage that really reflects the brand of Marshalltown and is ultimately easily readable, it's timeless, and it's cost-effective. So looking at theme development, we looked at, you know, various other communities, other families of signage, just to generate some ideas and try to see what people react to. We prepared a series of graphics and boards with multiple images at different scales, you know, whether it's something like an entry monument sign or if it's more medium-scale, like a library sign or a civic landmark. We asked the steering committee what they liked, you know, what are the specific images that resonate with them. And then we ultimately took that information and dissected it down even further. So we asked them, why did you pick these? You know, what elements of that sign did you like best? You know, why is that appropriate for Marshalltown? We learned a lot through this process. We got some great ideas, and, you know, it ultimately led us to developing a series of themes and initial concepts that we presented to the committee, had them evaluate, we revised them, presented them again, revised them again, and ultimately came up with a preferred concept. But really, to summarize what our committee told us is, want something artistic, use a mix of materials. This mainly pertains to the entry monument, where you get in the, more of the civic sign, where you get into more kind of a robust sign, just because of the scale of it, so you got some more flexibility with materials. The one thing that resonated with every sign was that it needs to be easily read, you know, at an appropriate size and appropriate distance. Consider speed, location, obstructions. And then ultimately, it's a consistent theme at each scale. So regardless of how big the sign is, where it is, all of it needs to be easily relatable to one another, so it represents Marshalltown, and it's, you know, it creates a sense of place. I mentioned mapping. We went through a pretty rigorous process to map civic buildings, city parks, schools, community destinations. But ultimately, we created a directional signage map that identified where existing signs were, what was on each sign, and then we made recommendations for having new signs. We've essentially more than doubled the amount of directional signage there is in the community. But again, that's responding to understanding how people are going to get to and from different locations as they enter town and make sure the appropriate items that were expressed to us are represented on the signage. We also looked at parking lots. These are public, these are city parking lots. These are, if you're familiar with how they're named now, it's a, they're basically identified by a random letter. We made the recommendation that maybe we number these lots. Might make them easier to find, a little more intuitive, if you will, rather than kind of at random as they were before.
You might back one.
Yep.
You've got Center Street labeled as North Second Avenue.
That is inaccurate. Thank you. So Chapter Four here looks at what the concepts are for each piece of the signage master plan. The item shown here is the entry monument concept. Within the report, there's a description of the quantity, the anticipated locations of where these would reside, as well as an estimated implementation cost. There's descriptive information on here regarding type of materials, what the, how the sign would be detailed, you know, what the lettering is, if it's backlit or not. This is meant to provide the city enough information to take this to a signage fabricator or develop this into a bid package and start to get some really hard numbers on these. We reached out to several different signage manufacturers, masons, contractors, to develop these costs. The estimated cost on each page or each item is identified as the per-unit cost with a 15% contingency, understanding that, you know, this is fairly schematic in nature, as well as any, you know, an estimate of 15% for engineering and construction fees, depending on how the city would proceed with implementing each one of these. The next piece is the civic sign concept. These would be city hall, public library, police and fire station, facilities like that. Again, this is staying with that consistent theme, just a scaled-down version of it, if you will. The plan is that this site, this sign in particular would still be internally lit, so you'd be able to see the lettering at night, take on a similar aesthetic, but it just doesn't need to be as big. So here, same strategy. We identify the locations, have some notes on here about certain things to consider as you implement this, you know, depending on the orientation, the location, there might be specific needs for electrical feed, that type of information. And then we have the cost at the bottom. We also looked at parks. We kind of created a hierarchy for parks and how they'd be identified, identifying community parks, such as Riverview Park, Anson Park, the larger parks that have more of a regional draw, and then the neighborhood parks. This one that we used here as the example is Turtle Park. We've, these are simplified again. The community park would still have that masonry base, but this would be more of a, this would not require electrical, this would not be lit, this would be just a high-pressure laminate sign with the reflective graphics on it. We could have the hours of operation, specific amenities to that park. At the neighborhood level, we get rid of the concrete base, you know, this could be incorporated into a landscape bed, something similar, like several of these are now, but these are just direct berry posts, and then the high-pressure laminate panel attached to it. At the bottom of this sheet, the costs are identified and separated based on community park versus neighborhood park. Directional signage, again, this is that map that had all the different locations and arrows and information on it. There's really three different scales of directional signage, and this is dependent on what exists on the sign. So we created three different sizes. Both are identified with a slightly different cost, and then we've given parameters as to how big each sign is and, you know, what would be allowed to be on this. I'm going to show a matrix following this, but there's a specific code identified with each sign, and there's a letter that corresponds to what size of directional sign it would be. And we also have a concept here for identifying the parking lots. You're seeing kind of the front and back here with this concept, if it's oriented a specific way. Following this piece in the document, we have a summary of anticipated costs. We have, on the left column here, we have the sign type, we have the quantity for each sign type, estimated unit costs, and then the extended total cost. At the bottom, we have that subtotal cost with 15% contingency, and then the estimated engineering and construction fees. The last piece of this document is a signage matrix. Again, we're trying to provide the city enough information to kind of allow them to implement this as easy as possible and really keep track of where this stuff is and what's on it. The current system that was in place, we had to basically send people out and take pictures of the signs and find them around town and collect the coordinates of them. You'll now have all of that in place for each sign type. On this matrix, you have a number that corresponds to the sign type, you have the location with X, Y coordinates, that then, that's from our GIS database, and then you have the type of sign and then the content for each one. This becomes particularly important when you look at the directional signage. We have over 50 signs here at various locations. These could be identified with a simple sticker on the back, similar to like how light poles are identified and numbered. You could have a specific number that corresponds to this matrix and would allow the city to keep track of where these signs are, what's on them. If one of them gets run over by a car, somebody can say it's XYZ sign, and then you can get a replacement for it. So that, very quickly, is the results of what we've been working on for the last several months. Like I stated, the folks that have been involved in this process were, we created a very informative process, were very critiquing of the work we did, you know. We had no emotion in this. We said, tell us what you like. This is going to represent your community, and we got some great direction, and I think this is representative of that. So, questions?
Any questions from the council?
Yes.
Yes.
If I can. Why didn't you put one on the east side? Was there a reason?
You mean a monument?
Yeah.
So I would say that's a possibility, but this was looking at definitely replacing. There's a lot more sort of legwork that needs to be done to find a location and secure some right of way and things to do that. So that is certainly something that was brought forward from the steering committee as a want, but, you know, it wasn't as easy as replacing something already existing.
And where does the south one go?
So that's a, the south one is currently at the corner of Iowa Avenue and Highway 14, South Center Street.
Okay. That's it. What's the timing on this? Do we know?
Well, I think Casey had a really great example from the city of Clive that I think I'd like him to share about how you go about implementing, if you don't mind.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing that up, because I meant to touch on implementation and phasing. The city of Clive went through a similar process, and I think back in 2012, they completed their signage master plan. So it's been in place for a few years, and we recently completed a design of a park project there, and they had requested that we put in a new park sign, consistent with the master plan. And I said, great. I said, can I go take a pic? Where's the most recent one that you've installed? And they said, well, we haven't built a park since we've implemented the master plan, so we haven't actually built one yet. So for that particular element of the master plan, this is going to be the first one. So we actually took the details from their master plan, put it right into our construction package, and then that's going to be built when they build their new park. If you had a sign that was, you know, slated to be removed or, you know, repainted or something that was going to require additional maintenance costs or a burden, or somebody takes out a sign, I think that would be an opportune time to do it. Relating to Highway 14 and the repaving project that the DOT is going to be doing on Highway 14, that might be a terrific time to roll into the signage that's identified along Highway 14. So I think it's taken the opportunities of certain construction projects specifically, and then thinking about, you know, how you build this into your budget over, you know, three to five fiscal years potentially, to implement certain portions of it.
I guess my big concern here would be trying to figure out what are you going to put things right now, and you don't know where things are going to be. And if you're looking at trying to do this in the near future, I think that would be a wrong move, and we need to slow down a bit.
Yeah. I would say the one that comes to mind as potentially maybe the first one would be that building signage for the new police and fire station, but ultimately, that would be something we would bring back to you probably closer towards the end of the project for your consideration, but that's really our newest facility. So it's, right now, I would say this is very much a planned phase. We would probably look and see what our projects are forthcoming as we put together the next capital improvement plan and see if there would be a reason to include any signage updates as part of any of those projects. So I think, as Casey said, you don't bite it off all at once, you have to kind of go piece by piece and what makes sense with things that you have planned.
So we would vote on sections of it as we go along?
Right. That's, we'd be trying to incorporate, not as this is a standalone project to implement all of this, but, you know, where does it fit in with other projects that are happening, you know, that we're already planning?
When they rebuild Highway 14 north of town, that would be a good time to redo the sign then.
Yeah. And with that one in particular, I think we talked about as a committee, it'd be nice to actually bring that, you know, on the south side of the bridge, if possible, where it's a little bit more noticeable and prominent and easier to kind of see as you're coming across the bridge. So there's lots of ideas that the committee had, and I think, you know, those are all things to be explored about what's feasible. As Casey mentioned, electricity is something that you need for backlighting and things, so what sites make sense? You know, is it what you currently have, or is there a better location?
So we have a motion and a second on the table. Are there more questions for Mr. Byers from the council?
So what are we actually voting on?
This is to accept the report, the plan.
To accept the plan.
Accept the plan. Okay. Are there any public comments?
Anna Wolvers, 213 Thomas Drive. I would second your concern. Al, I even wrote that on my page. Why not wait until after tornado rebuilds? So if locations change, you're not redoing signs. I know Bill would normally say, why redo it twice, not do it right the first time? And I would also question, why can't we paint like our current signs? I know we were voted All-American City or something, and there's an All-American City sign by the south side one. So like, the cost-effectiveness of maintaining what we already have versus rebuilding completely brand-new and elaborate? And as a new member to the community 13 years ago, the blue and white ones that we currently have helped me find everywhere I needed to go for teacher trainings and parks and the schools and the AEA. So I know other people don't necessarily go to those places, but they are consistent already throughout our town and are useful in their current condition.
Thank you. Are there other public comments?
Karen Gregory, Martha Allen Tyke Foundation. I just want to really commend you for bringing forth this plan. The timing couldn't be better to have the plan and as we rebuild to implement these. The timing couldn't be better to have the plan, and as we rebuild to implement these. And I realize that the Tyne Foundation helped pay for this, and on behalf of the Tyne Foundation, you guys hit it out of the park. This is good. So thank you, and keep up the good work on making Marshalltown as good as we know it is. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there other public comments? Okay, roll call, please, when you're ready.
Flamer?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Thank you, carried. And we have a report next from Jenny Etter, Executive Director of the MCBD.
Jenny Etter, Marshalltown Central Business District, 16 East Main. This is the first time that I've been able to talk to you since the tornado, and I really, really want to thank the city, thank all the workers, thank the Fire Department, the Police Department, everybody that mobilized things so quickly. I've had people from Main Street Iowa, from national Main Street legislators, people tour right after the tornado and just recently, and they've been amazed at the progress that's already been made, how much has been cleaned up, and all the work that's been done already. So we really need to pat ourselves on the back for all the hard work that everybody has done over the past few weeks. It's really not that long ago. So one of the things that we want to do is on October 13th, have a Marshalltown Strong Day. We're sponsoring this with the Convention and Visitors Bureau and the Chamber of Commerce to celebrate the reopening of all the local businesses downtown, restaurants, bars, shops, and for everybody to come down and eat, spend, and support. All of the hardy people who've made it through the storm have got their buildings open and are looking better than they have in a long time. Also, for, we've been asked repeatedly, are we having our holiday stroll? I can tell you, yes, in fact, we are. We're really excited. It will be tailored differently than the past strolls, but it will be November Saturday, November 17th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. We're going to have entertainment at the Tall Corn at United Methodist Church. We're going to have food. We're going to have carolers. And the theme this year is Light Up the Night. So everything that doesn't move in the downtown is going to have lights on it, from security fences to scaffolding to maybe even lift trucks. We'll see about that. But we want lights everywhere. We want everyone to come down and celebrate the holiday season in the downtown. Our flower baskets will come down next week on Monday. And can you believe it? You know, we had 96 baskets from Third Street to Third Avenue, and all of them made it but six. It's just astounding to me that they hung in there. So if you ever want to know what hardy plants to plant, that'd be wave petunias. They seem to be pretty strong. In the process, since the tornado, one of the things that has kept us very busy is meeting with building and business owners, talking about their renovation projects, talking about rebuilding, restoring, restructuring, and repairing their buildings. And as you know, we've had a couple amazing finds. One is the Ocean City facade. For a lot of people, they never knew that Fidelity Bank building facade was behind the metal clad. And since the storm, that's come off and is looking pretty sad. After many, many meetings, we have convinced the building owner to restore that. And so that is in the process, and that will begin shortly, having that go back to the historic look that it did. It's going to take all of his insurance money and a lot of money on top of that that we'll be getting through grants, et cetera, and public donations to help with restoring this. But for most people, it would be a travesty to have that covered up again. There's a couple other buildings that their facades are also now coming off and revealing really lovely historic details in the building. So I think you're going to see over the next few years that some of these buildings are going to come back to life again in their historic, original state. So it's really very exciting. We were amazingly impressed with the amount of donations that came in to support our tornado relief fund. We were able to acquire over $50,000, and now we're starting to allocate that. We've chosen to have the focus of those funds be for the businesses downtown. There's going to be money coming down the pike for building renovations, facade money, et cetera, but there weren't any funds specifically earmarked for businesses. And so this money is earmarked for businesses so that they, after their insurance pays for their repairs and things to their businesses, that we know there's a gap in what their insurance pays for and what they need to keep their buildings going or make those improvements to make their buildings look really great. And, you know, we're really invested in having our renovations and restoration of the downtown. We want that bar very high. We want the buildings to look better than they ever have. We want the quality of work to be better than it ever has been. So everybody's very proud of the work that goes into restoring the downtown. Our application is on our website, marshalltownmainstreet.com, and/or you can stop by my office and get an application. We review those every Monday. Sue and three other people are on that committee. We want a direct turnaround so that those checks go out quickly to people, and we'll disperse those funds until they're gone. And so hopefully, people that are needing money will be able to apply for that and get some of those funds. We're working in conjunction also with Marshalltown Economic Development. Let me have Tom come up and talk about his loan program, because we want people to know about these pools of money that they can access to help their business and buildings.
Good evening. Thanks, Jenny. Tom Daimler, 1103 West State Street. I'm Director of Marshall Economic Development. One of the things that I experienced in a previous position when I worked in Iowa Falls was that we assisted the Parkersburg situation from a business economic development standpoint, and a program that we implemented up there is something that we've replicated down here. So we've worked with the Heart of Iowa Communications and Consumers Energy to leverage some existing revolving loan funds that we had internally from a fund created a number of years ago to create a fund of about $350,000 in working capital loans specific to businesses that were impacted by the tornado. So the way this program works, these are character loans, so we vet it with their banker. They're meant for companies and businesses that were impacted that want to continue, want to keep going, or building owners who want to fix up a building to allow for a business to keep going. The loan cap's out at $10,000. It's a zero-interest loan with a deferred payment for two years and then amortized over five years. So it's really meant to try to be a cash injection for these businesses or building owners who have a lot of bills coming in, but maybe not a lot of revenue. So that can be accessed by contacting our office or contacting Jenny down at her office. And I would just note that it's for impacted businesses within the community, not just specific to the downtown. So we have approved our first batch of five loans recently here. And like anything, we would have liked to have been up and going two months ago, but it takes a little time to work with the USDA and some of our government partners. So by all means, if you know somebody, if anybody out there knows somebody, please have them contact Jenny or myself. Thank you.
So although his is a loan, our funding is a grant, and it's not meant to be paid back. So it's first come, first served, and we're really trying to come up with funding sources for folks, because we know there's just not enough money to do all of the things that they need to do. So it's going pretty well so far. Do you have any questions for me or comments?
Have you already reviewed some?
Today, we went through the first applications. There were five of them that we went over today. No, six.
Seven.
Six or seven, and approved four. We're getting more information on three of them. And then we'll get back to people and get checks out as soon as tomorrow.
So what type of requests have you seen so far?
Things like doors, a security door that was not in there, covered by insurance, some paint, and additional features to the entryways of some of the businesses, things like that.
Thank you.
You said you had communication with the downtown businesses?
Yeah, I've talked to about 50 of them.
Have you talked to each and every business owner down there in Marshalltown?
Well, there's over 200, so no, I haven't yet, but they're on the list. We plan to talk to everyone in our district to make sure that we know what their needs are. One of the things that is taking us so much time is gathering data about how much has been covered by insurance and what those gaps still are. A lot of people still have not settled with their insurance companies. They're still dealing with trying to get the right numbers for the job. Getting contractors has been difficult. Getting materials for roofing and windows is still difficult. So we're still trying to gather information from everyone and hope to have all of that data gathered within a few months. I was hoping I would be able to tell you when our historical architect is coming on board. Main Street Iowa is paying for a historical architect to come to town for six months to help the business and building owners with those restoration plans. And so she's also going to be helping us with collecting data and talking to building and business owners.
Thank you. Are there other, do you have other comments in your report?
That's it.
Okay, so are there more questions from the council? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next. I will entertain a resolution, I mean, a motion to approve Resolution 2018-176, approving amended engineering services agreement number two for the Marshalltown High Street Drainage Project for Bolton and Mank, an increase of $11,950. And Mr. Byers?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, there's been a motion and a second. Go ahead, Mr. Byers.
I would just ask, I didn't see a map in there that showed where the easements were.
Yep, you bet. So I've got a couple of different graphics here.
Okay.
Items in, we got two permanent easements to cover a new pipe that's being installed. There's currently a pipe in the same location, but there's no easement that was able to be found, so we're, that's why we're here now. This is on, let's see, I'm just trying to get my stuff straight here.
From High Street going north.
Yep.
South.
This is, I've got a couple of different ones. So this is at the end of Fourth Street. So this is actually the temporary construction easements along these properties. And then this is as it comes up to High Street. These are the permanent easements. There's another look at the piece that connects them. And of the 11 temporary construction easements, it's basically to cover temporary grading for lots on Fourth Street, including sidewalk and driveway replacement that's in the right of way of these affected lots.
Are there any questions for Mr. Byers? Any public comment or questions? Roll call, please.
Flamer?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Okay, carried. I'll entertain a motion for approval of Resolution 2017-177, approving contract change order for the police and fire headquarters project, general supplies for Garland Construction with an increase of $24,0682.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Mr. Dix is here to answer any questions about this and the next several. Police and Fire Headquarters Project.
Yes, Ethan Dix with Story Construction. You'll see six changes in front of you affecting seven contracts on the project. Ranges from moving to a storage room. Had to divide an electrical transformer room and a storage room to separate that out so they both have their uses in that one. The mobile shelving that has been purchased by the Police Department is in electrical units, so we're adding power to the project to operate those. The fire station hood, that one, coordination between, for the gas shut-off requirements for the hood, doing some work to that. There is a grate in the mezzanine that has a frame and lid. We had purchased the frame. This is the lid to finish that off that requirement. Then we have RFI 93, we had a bunch of GFIs, your ground fault circuits for all your outlets. Bringing that to proper code on concealed outlets, we're putting in GF CI breakers instead of the outlets for those. And then the last one, back to that mobile shelving, you have to pour those slabs in two lifts, and this last one is the topping slab. So you pour the slab down low, the rails get installed, then you come back with the topping slab. And that was to find that. So those are the six in front of you tonight, and it's split up between the contractors.
All right, are there any council questions? Okay. We have a motion and a second for the first resolution. Roll call, please.
Isom?
Yes.
Flamer?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
I need a motion for Resolution 2018-178.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions? And I'll note, for the public, these are all in the detail. If you want the fine detail, it's all on the website in the packet for tonight. Roll call, please.
Flamer?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
I need a motion for Resolution 2018-179. So moved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Okay, roll call, please.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Flamer?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes. And Resolution 2018-180, that's, I need a motion for that.
So moved.
I heard a motion, no, second. Second, got it. Okay, any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Isom?
Yes.
Flamer?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
And we're up to Resolution 2018-181. I'll need a motion for that.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Flamer?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes. And the final one for what Mr. Dix just described is Resolution 2018-182.
So moved.
Second. Oh, there's another one. Seven. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call please.
Flamer?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isim?
Yes.
Okay, and finally, oh, and I would note, the very first one we did, is that meant to be 2018-177?
Correct.
Okay. And the very, the last one here then regarding the police and fire headquarters is Resolution 2018-183 for the painting. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. And discussion, I see a public comment question. Come on up.
Gary Thompson, 601 East Main. I just have a stupid question about all the change orders, not specifically tonight, but in general on this project. How many, since I build a building, I understand change orders. How many of these are legitimate change orders? Like hauling in a load of gravel because it's too muddy, you know, something like that? How many of these are the mistake of the architect? Or the contractors that bid these? Are we, do we have any policy in place to recoup some of this money and get it back from the architect? I can't believe that we're putting different GFI that wasn't specified originally and bid on. And I can't believe we bought, we specified a frame for a grate and now we have to go back and change and buy a grate? I'm confused about some of these. And again, I don't, I don't care about the specifics, Leon. I'm just saying in general, do we have someone in place to go back and put the onus back on the architect or the contractors that bid these? You know, are these legitimate change orders? That's my question. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Yes, we do.
Would you like to address that, Mr. Dix? Or would you like Mr. Flamer to address it?
We, the change orders that Mr. Dix brings us are real change orders. And we do have a system in place. Matter of fact, we've already talked to the contractor and the engineer, well, the engineer, I know, about that there's some of the cost he's going to absorb, and he's agreed to that because we found some places where he may have missed something, and they've agreed to cover those. So we've, those kind of things we have, we've got covered. Good question, though. Yes, he's gonna, he'll get some of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flamer. Okay, and so, I think we're up to a motion and a second, and we're ready for roll call.
Isim?
Yes.
Flamer?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2018-184, setting date for a public hearing on an offer to purchase city-owned property located at 22 North Center Street. This is the current police building.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion, is this yours to take on?
Yes, and I was gonna say, I'll kind of recap, and then David Hicks with YSS is here. YSS was the only, or I should say Youth and Shelter Services of Marshall County was the only entity to submit a bid on the building through the request for proposal process that we utilized. And so, their bid of $35 is what is before you tonight to set the public hearing on. And so, Mr. Hicks is here to provide any other comments that you might have, or questions you might have.
David Hicks, Director of YSS of Marshall County. Any questions on the 22 North Center Street bid?
One question that I have that was brought up earlier.
Yes.
As well as, with the building in your plans, are there plans to update the building or to bring it into additional code if there are faults in that area?
Absolutely. We recognize that the bathrooms may not be ADA accessible, so we would certainly address that. One of our main goals is to provide increased mental health care here in Marshalltown. We're gonna provide some upgrades to one of the rooms so we can do telehealth as we do in our Ames, Story County office and in Webster City. So we may need some technology needs. Updating some of the rooms, of course, make them a lot more family-friendly, easier to access, and to be able to provide our services to anybody who needs them.
Thank you very much.
I have a couple procedural questions. I read the contract, and first of all, I think the contract needs to be rewritten and the name of the organization, I think, in the contract is supposed to be spelled out somewhere. And it's all abbreviated. But that's just contract language that I think needs to be done right. The second thing is, we're gonna, it's gonna cost the city a ton of money to move the electrical and the heating and all that stuff out of the basement and get it in our building. We don't know what that cost is gonna be, and I hate to sell a building and then we're, we're basically got the shaft, because we got whatever cost it has to pay, we have to pay. I'd rather see us go in and get an engineering, hire an engineer, go in, look at the building, put some plans and specs together on what it's gonna cost us to move all that stuff over there before we commit to sell a building for 35 bucks and have no idea what the final cost is gonna be to move all the electrical and the heating and all that kind of stuff into our building and build a wall to separate it. I think we're getting the cart ahead of the horse here. I'd like to see us get that done first, so we know what those costs are gonna be, because that cost could be pretty big. I think we need to know what that cost is before we can commit to a $35 sale on the building. And all, once we find out it's gonna cost us a million bucks to move the stuff, well, maybe we don't want to sell the building, maybe we just want to rent it or use it for something else so that we don't have to make those moves. I think we're one step too far down the line. I want to know what those costs are first.
And I, one of the things I had provided in a previous memo was detailing of what those costs were estimated to be, including the elevator, and that estimate was, I'm not, Justin's not here to tell me where those came from, but I believe they were from Dave Daters, our building maintenance guy. I did run those before I, through him before I put them in the memo, and that was an estimated cost of $183,000, with 100,000 of that being the elevator upgrades. And so, ultimately, that's the cost estimate that you all have to work off of in order to get the, I mean, the next step would be, if you actually choose to sell the building, would be putting an architect or engineer under contract to develop those plans and specifications so that we would have a public improvement project for you to order construction on. And so, it's very much like it's a preliminary phase. And so, that's where I would say that we wouldn't order, we wouldn't order, you know, basically, an architect or engineer to start that process until we were sure that was a project we were going to proceed with.
Well, if we're gonna sell the building, we gotta proceed with that first. That needs to be done first.
Well, so we have a rough cost estimate, so it's very much like the Senior Citizen Center or the Coliseum.
But a rough estimate could be, could double. I've been down that road, and when you're talking about, as old as these buildings are, and moving all that stuff and bringing it up to code, $180,000 won't do it. So I'm, I would like us to stop the sale on the building, and let's get the architect in here, because we're getting close enough with a new building. Let's get that project started. If we're gonna sell it, let's go ahead and get this done first.
I would strongly discourage spending money on an engineer or architect unless you are actually ready to move forward with whatever repairs to City Hall and making those separations. Otherwise, you've just spent a significant amount of money, which is probably easily, if you think about 10% to 20%, anywhere between 18,000 to $36,000 on a contract with somebody. If that is the direction you would like to proceed, we can certainly do that. If you would move forward with selling the building, we would need to move forward that way anyways with making those improvements. So, it's kind of a whether you do it now or whether you do it later, it's still probably a cost that you would have to incur. One correction I would like to make, Mr. Flamer, this is just a notice of setting the public hearing. It is not any sort of agreement for the sale of the building. And so, the process that is being utilized here is one where, if you choose to publish the notice of selling the building to YSS of Marshall County, there is a 30-day waiting period, and that public hearing would not be held until November 12th. And so, there's a lot that could still happen in the meantime as well. It is also possible that other interested parties can submit offers up until, I think it was, I think, November 8th. Yes, the 8th day of November at 1 o'clock, other parties can submit offers on the building as well, which you then can consider at that public hearing on November 12th, or would be presented at that public hearing on November 12th. So this is a different process than we typically utilize.
I understand that, but I still understand that in November, if we accept that, we're gonna have to do this work before, before, when the fire, when the police move out, we're gonna have to do that work, and before he can move into the building. And then, he's gonna have to rebuild a bunch of stuff in the building, because when we move that out, he won't have service to the building. And I think he needs to know that, and we need to know what those numbers are.
Yes.
So I'm, I understand where you're coming from, but what I'm saying is I think we ought to stop this process, and let's get the engineer, and since it looks like our police and fire building is gonna get done in time, and let's get, let's get the people started for the transfer and get that stuff done before we go any further with the sale of the building.
So, two things to talk about of which we had already discussed or basically had mentioned in the proposal. The City Hall was going to need a new HVAC system, that it was going to be easier to cut off the current boiler system, which is located in the police building, and leave that to serve that building, along with the hot water heater, which is shared between the two. The things that were to be determined were really the elevator. We do know we'll have to make updates to that at some point here in the near future. I think it's by 2020 is when we have to do that. And so, that was a known cost that the city was going to incur, as well as then the generator was to be determined, which was going to be based on potential new buyer having an interest and wanting to be connected to the same generator. If that was something we wanted to do with sort of an annual maintenance agreement whereby there would be a charge for that service. And so, those things are pretty well spelled out right now in terms of what they are. It's the hot water heater and the boiler unit are the two things that would be left in the police building, because that's where they're currently located. Those would be new installations in City Hall, because those would then not be providing service to City Hall.
I understand.
Does this $180,000 estimate include the new HVAC?
Yes, it includes the HVAC, elevator HVAC, hot water heater, and then closing of entrances or securing of shared access points in the building. And so, you know, it's an estimate, is one that has been reviewed by our staff and came also directly from previous estimates that had been done about, what if you were to just tear the building down, what all would you have to do at that point as well? And so, those are numbers that we feel pretty comfortable with and that our building facility maintenance manager felt pretty comfortable with too at this point, knowing that because of the cost we're talking about, we would need to move forward with hiring an architect and engineer to do formal plans and specs, because it would hit that Chapter 26 threshold of a public improvement project.
Did we have any money set aside in the 17.5 million for the police and fire building to address the sale or the?
No.
Yeah, okay. That's what I was thinking, I couldn't.
But most of this work is actually budgeted in fiscal year 2020 in the capital improvement plan. This would be moving it up into fiscal year 19, the current fiscal year, to complete as soon as possible. And so, it was something that we were actively planning for, that the building would need to be disposed of at some point, whether that be by tearing it down, or whether that be by selling it to another entity, that there was work that the city was going to incur regardless of those outcomes.
So, Mr. Hicks, what kind of investment do you think you need to make in that building, like dollar-wise? Do you have an estimate?
I don't at this point, but I have three foundations that we're working with to basically raise the funds. So we've got Lord Foundation, we've talked to Martha Lantai. We were looking at purchasing a building two or three years ago and doing a capital campaign. The tornado came along and obviously displaced us, and a capital campaign would not be appropriate at this time to purchase a building here in Marshalltown. So, it's a great opportunity for us, and the foundations that we're working with would help us make, you know, necessary repairs on the police department, knowing that we'd be working off a boiler system, which may have some age. So we'd be working with those foundations to help create a little bit of a nest egg if indeed we need to make a repair or replacement.
And what, so you're still displaced?
Yeah, we're in the basement of the police department right now, doing business as is. But we continue to serve the children and families here in Marshalltown and surrounding counties.
And so, the timing for you, you know, just like ASAP, right?
Well, I know the police department is looking at a March date, and that's all kind of weather-related and then project-related, so we're just gonna keep working to that point. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Hicks? Oh, come on up. Gotta raise your hand a little higher.
Anna Wolvers, 213 Thomas Drive. Just questioning the $35 total. I mean, who's to say someone wanting property in Marshalltown couldn't buy it for more? I mean, that doesn't seem like a fair taxpayer cost to absorb. There should at least be a zero or something for buying a business, you know, so, in Marshalltown. And then, what's the current plan of the current YSS? I know it was demolished, but is the city absorbing that cost to take that down? Or is that the YSS cost as well?
I'll have to have Mr. Hicks address that. It's not city-related.
Regarding the YSS building, we were a tenant of that building. And then, we were on a month-to-month lease with that building. Tornado came along, the current building owner wanted to use our office to restart his grocery store, which was just destroyed around the corner. So we were given pretty much an instant to get out. So, that's the reason, it's privately owned building, so the city has nothing to do with that. The bid on the building simply just reflects our honor for our 35 years here in Marshalltown, which is in 2018. We know, again, that a capital campaign would not be appropriate at this time to try and raise $250,000, $300,000. My advisory board, we landed on the $35 realizing that it could be rejected or it could be accepted. And we provide a lot of service to the community, I think, on the backside that saves the community a lot of money in terms of bettering children's lives, families' lives, keeping kids together. So that's where we landed.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Are there other questions? Public comments? Mr. Eaton?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. So my question is, it sounds like the city has a furnace room and a boiler room. I don't know how much it costs to operate that furnace and boiler room with nobody in it, but it's gonna cost us $183,000 or something to move the facility over here. And why is it we can't leave all the equipment there and rent the space to YSS? I don't know.
So, just to correct that one thing, did I answer your other question, Ms. Wolvers? Did I? Okay, I don't remember it now. So, as Ms. Kinzer just explained, the, this $180,000 actually included new HVAC for City Hall.
I understand.
Leaving the boiler system over in the PD, so yeah.
But we don't need, we don't need it.
Right.
It's over there, it's functioning.
It's over there, we wouldn't move it.
We don't need it.
Right.
And so, my point is, we don't need a new one in this building, because we have a functioning one in that building.
Correct.
And we own the building, and so, all we're doing in order to sell that dollar, that for $35, is spending $183,000. Now, if we close down all the upper floors, shut off all the water, and we keep the boiler and the water heater in the basement, it costs us 100 bucks a month to heat it. So it doesn't really make any sense to dispose of it. It's, it's just a furnace room. Just 'cause nobody's in it doesn't mean anything. And then, given that we have space on the upper floors, we could rent it to YSS, they would get their stuff. The taxpayer wouldn't have to spend $180,000 plus to put in a new furnace. We could just put in a door. Just a question.
Yep, that's definitely an option. And 100 out of the 180,000 is gonna be elevator upgrades we need to make anyway by 2020. But yes, that's definitely the calculation. Keep it, dispose of it. Rent it, sell it. Other questions or comments tonight on this issue? Okay, so this is setting a public hearing on the offer to purchase the city-owned property. We have a motion and a second, this would be November- We have a motion and a second, this would be November 12th, this hearing, and there are, there's still an option for other people, other organizations, to put in a proposal by November 8th, at noon.
1 o'clock, on November 8th.
1 o'clock, November 8th.
And can I clarify that that is not just a monetary proposal, but a purpose, was that the right name? The purpose proposal as well. We had adopted that that was how we were reviewing the property, as to whether it wasn't just a monetary amount in the bid.
Correct, okay. Seeing no other one for this issue, roll call, please.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
No.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carried. Next, I'll entertain a resolution, I mean, an approval of resolution, motion to approve Resolution 2018-185, terminating the 28E agreement with the Marshalltown YMCA, YWCA for operation of the Aquatic Center.
So move?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. And discussion, please.
This is an item that I would say that we would typically like to have before you, before discussion, before we would put a resolution before you. It was my fault that when we looked at the agreement, the agreement states that we have to provide notice of whether or not we want to continue or discontinue the contract by October 15th of each year. Without a Parks and Rec director, myself and Jill Petermeyer have been very involved working with Jenny Hart on some different things related to the, the operation of the Aquatic Center. And ultimately, as we started to crunch some numbers, we did come forward with a recommendation that we terminate the agreement. As was mentioned earlier, this is, this is something where our financial picture is going to be changing. These are general fund costs, and so that's where we, we want to be aware of them. Cost specifically is one of the things where we, we believe there will be some savings. Specifically, there's a $15,000 stipend to the YMCA, which does pay for their Aquatic Center Director and Assistant Directors' time, and what they provide in sort of management oversight. We do not get separately billed for those hours. What, we then reimburse all other expenses essentially, including the, the lifeguard hourly staff, any supplies, any materials, anything needed to basically keep the Aquatic Center operational. What is included in the packet is the breakdown that the YMCA, YWCA gives us, as we go along throughout the season, and there are bills that come along with that for verifying expenses. And as we looked at that, we, we realized that there was approximately $7,000 to $9,000 that we could route differently outside of that 15,000 that I just mentioned. Specifically, when, when we pay employees, any of their, if they're in the general fund, any of their benefits are coming from the employee benefits tax levy, versus coming directly out of the general fund dollars. And so that right there was estimated to be 5,000 to 6,000. That ultimately depends on your total payroll, which, as you can see from what was provided year to year, we did have some significant differences in payroll. One of the other things is the Y uses an outside payroll processor, and there is a fee for that entity to process their payroll, which then is part of what we, we ultimately reimburse them for their payroll expenses, and that's about 2,000 to 3,000 a year. We believe that there probably could be some other efficiencies found. We've, we've worked over the last few years to try to, to do more joint ordering, and more managing of supplies and inventory, and we think that we can move this to a completely different level if it's all under the umbrella of Parks and Recreation, but it was harder to put a, a figure with what that could look like. One of the other things that hopefully you all know is that we do staff the concession stand down at the pool, and so we have city employees who are concession stand workers, as well as Jenny Hart as recreation supervisor, who is already providing some management aspect down to the Aquatic Center on an annual basis, as well as then preparing. One of the things that we did do in the renegotiation of the most recent Aquatic Center management agreement, or operation agreement, was take on more direct responsibility for the daily cleaning of the facility before opening, as well as the, the lawn mowing and lawn care and maintenance. So rather than reimbursing those costs to the Y, we took those on, hoping to see some savings there as well. One other thing that, it would be hard to, to go by in this conversation without mentioning that this year was a, a rough year at the Aquatic Center. Staffing was an issue, and so I think all of you probably had an angry email or phone call at least once, I think I heard from all of you on that, of individuals who were very unhappy when the lazy river was closed, or other areas were closed, and that they didn't feel that they were getting their money's worth. We, we worked with the Y to make sure that we had enough staffing to fully staff the Aquatic Center, and it just didn't work out. And there were many times where, rather than reimbursing, you know, fees paid to enter, we were giving out free passes and things. Ultimately, we feel this is an area of accountability, where, you know, we do have an agreement with the Y that doesn't have that accountability built in, but if citizens are going to be angry at us and, and want us to fix something or provide something, we feel that that's within our realm, that we should be addressing that. And so by having the city basically be in charge of the entire operations of the Aquatic Center, it does bring back all that responsibility, which is a huge responsibility, and nobody's saying that it isn't, but it truly does put us in that position where we are accountable to the public and to those patrons for the operations. One other thing that will be coming forward to you at some point in the future, this happened much prior to Ann Selness's departure. She'd been talking with the AEA about the Pleasant Hill Pool, and that they were in need of certified pool operator to basically manage that facility, which would then provide sort of open access for the Parks and Recreation Department, to start planning more than just sort of indoor swim lessons over the winter, but to be able to provide more programming, specifically as we're sitting here talking about more opportunities for seniors, more opportunities for senior programming specifically with what is really a state-of-the-art indoor pool that has a movable floor and can go all the way to zero depth. And so, that's really something that we thought, as we planned to bring something forward to you, to take over the management of that aquatic facility, that we should really look in-house and realize that we have the capability to take over the operations of the larger outdoor aquatic facility. And so, I, I would just like to make clear, this is nothing against the YMCA, they have managed this well. The $15,000 that they've received has been a, annually has been an amount that has never changed, they've never asked for that to change, and we've had a, a positive partnership. But this really does come down to, to costs, and where we're currently allocating resources, and the belief that we can, we can save some money and save some, save some staff time allocation as well. Councilmember Hoop did ask for sort of a, a more overview of, you know, besides just the expenses that were billed to us from the Y, what is out there, and what does that look like? And so, what you do have before you is, from the period of October 1st of 2016 to September 30th of 2017, and same with 2018, what those revenues and expenditures look like for the Aquatic Center. And one thing to note on here is, it does exclude concessions. Concessions are in their own fund and run separately, and are not counted as part of it. And so the, the quick thing to point out is, no matter how you do it, this is not a, a revenue-making venture for us. The concessions does make a little bit of revenue, which we then try to put back towards capital projects at the pool when, when there's enough available.
Any questions for Ms. Kinzer?
I have one.
Okay, Mr. Lamer?
I would, I understand where you're going, and I, I'm not complaining about that, I, no comments about that. My comment would be, I would hope that we get Ann replaced real quick. If we're going to take on this, this responsibility, and she was already working with the Pleasant Hill Pool, I, I hope we get somebody real quick. I hope you're advertising for that position, so we can get it filled, and, and we have somebody on staff that can, before the budget process all gets going full bore, that they're here and they, they can be involved in it.
It might be, budget technically starts like now, so it's not possible to do that, but that would be the idea, that we would be looking for someone who is a certified pool operator and has aquatic center management experience, in addition to a variety of other experiences. And so, if you, if you were to say yes to this tonight, then that's where I would be working with our HR director to have something out by the end of the week, hopefully.
Okay, good enough.
Are there other council questions?
Does, does, does the Y have any comments, do you know?
I think there may be some Y representatives here tonight. Are there other council comments, though, first? At this point? It's not a last call, you can ask later, but...
Do we have an estimated, I know we have like 23,000 essentially estimated savings, so, from a bottom line, if we were to run it? Do we have an estimated, say, 2019, say, everything else stayed stagnant in 2018? From 2018?
So, that's, that's really hard to do, kind of at this point, with looking at wages and benefits and things. In our contract, and what we paid with the Y, there were a number of days where we weren't paying 12 lifeguards, or we weren't reimbursing 12 lifeguards to the Y, so that kept our, our costs lower. That's where I would say you would be looking at something more similar to 2017. I believe 2017 was a year where we didn't have too many weather-related closures, or even staffing-related closures at that point, and that it was pretty much fully operational for the entire year. I believe that's why 2018 looks like less of a loss, is because there is a significant difference in what we reimburse the Y for 2018 versus 2017.
Public comment?
Shelley Lechner, Aquatic Director at the Marshalltown YMCA, YWCA, 108 Washington Street. The Y is not campaigning to try and keep the agreement in place, however, we will continue to run if the, the council thinks that's best. I'm here basically tonight just kind of set the record straight on some things, and, and bring everything to light, and what the Y does bring to this arrangement, as far as safety and other things. There are many factors, lifeguard shortages wasn't just Marshalltown. I want to make that very clear. It's a nationwide issue. We've been doing a lot of webinars and things with the Y of the USA, as far as how to recruit and retain, but we're up against a lot of competition. We're competing for candidates with other organizations and positions that pay more, and do not involve the same level of responsibility or intensive training. Several years ago, we began talking to the Park and Rec for, about the pay raises needed for lifeguards, so that we compete with the surrounding pools. Finally, in June of this year, after the season had already started, and lifeguards already had their positions at other pools, Park and Rec recommended to the city administrator that lifeguard pay increase to $10 an hour. Pay rate at the beginning of the season was below market rate and out of the control of the Y. I sent several emails to surrounding pools once that pay increase was put in place, trying to recruit some lifeguards that maybe needed some other jobs, more hours, things like that. I did get two other guards from surrounding pools that came in. I also took five of my indoor staff, there were brand-new guards, 15, which normally, to a safety factor, I don't like putting them out there at 15, it's just an experienced thing. But I did take those top five guards that I felt were capable of handling the outdoor aquatic center, and placing those outside, meaning that also put a very big strain on my staff inside. We ran short inside as well, all summer long. So it wasn't that I was fully staffed inside and they were short outside, I was short in both places. But we did our best every day to fill those positions. There were four days that we were completely closed, because we just didn't have enough staff, and those were towards the end of the season. And there were two at the beginning of the season where we were partially open, there was four other days too, that were, I guess there was probably more than four, but four that was posted on Facebook, that, because I went back, I couldn't remember day-to-day, that things weren't open completely. But we did our best every day to get that open. The managers spent hours getting that open, and getting guards and maneuvering things, maybe a guard come in for an hour or two in between sports activities. You know, we were open two weeks longer than most surrounding pools, so we were open two weeks after kids had went back to college, after sports and activities had started at the high school this year. Made a pretty big strain on us, and that's where you see a lot of our, our closings. I'm not denying that we were short, we were. So, there's a lot of things, whoops, sorry, I hit that. There's a lot of things that we're doing to recruit. I am looking to work with the high school, to get classes going on at the high school, and things like that, during the day when it's convenient for the kids. Many of our kids that want to do these lifeguarding positions are athletes, so the weekends and evenings are out for them, as far as taking the class. So we're looking at maybe having a class where they would get school credit for taking a lifeguarding class, that's how it was when I was in school, I know that, many years ago. When Carolyn Weir was there at the high school, she ran that lifeguarding program, did an amazing job. So, you know, we had an abundance then, and so we're hoping to get that back going. And along with that, kids are looking for internships this year, or now, versus a summer job. They're looking for things to gear towards their, their future career and things like that. So, taking that lifeguarding class and turning it into an in-paid internship at the end of the summer, you know, could also benefit not only us, but, you know, the city as well. So, we're looking to do a lot of things like that, and changing some different, even just the language and how we deal with a lot of these things. So, let's see. We're also looking at, you know, there's a huge cost and time commitment to the staff, to lifeguards, they're asked to pay $165 to get certified for the class. And on top of that, just the hours of trainings, the class itself is 30 hours. Once they are certified lifeguards and they come into our facility, they are asked to do another 17 hours of training on top of that, before they step foot onto the deck. So, our Y's training and drills are considered among the best in the Midwest by our liability insurance provider, Westbin, Safety Representative. His region covers a large portion of the Midwest, and considers our Y and one of, one other in his territory as the top two for safety training in the region. So I think that's a big thing that the Y brings to the table, as far as helping run the Aquatic Center. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Yes, Ms. Wolvers?
Anna Wolvers again, address had been stated. I want to echo that, because I was a Camp Adventure counselor in 2011, and I about died trying to do the lifeguard training requirement to be a counselor across the nation, so I know it's tough work, and for little pay, which echoes that, you know, need and nationwide. But I guess I would ask a question, if and when the certified pool operator is hired, would that person potentially be able to help check levels if and when we're ever able to get a splash pad in this community? Because I know the levels would need to be checked on that. But also echo, you know, like a splash pad has zero depth, so less drowning potential, and less need for staff too. So as we look forward for potential growth in the community and redevelopment, if, you know, when that becomes part of the prominent plan, can we maybe dual-use those staff resources as well? Because I know in the Park and Rec plan, the Park and Rec staff is already limited compared to nation numbers too. So, taking that duty on and hiring people is probably going to incur more staff expenses also, as you find people, and hire them and train them. So, just things to, I guess, question. Could the pool operator also help run a splash pad, if and when that becomes a reality? And echoing, I know it's hard to find qualified staff, because I literally had to think of the dummy as my human sibling, and luckily their hand was up, so I could rescue the 250-pound dummy, or else I wouldn't have been a camp counselor. So maybe reach out to you and I, ed majors that have taken the course also for Camp Adventure, and tap into that potential for internship and resume too.
Thank you. Other comments?
Gary Thompson, 601 East Main. Question for Jessica, then a question for Roger. Jessica, outside of the 28E, do we have a separate lease agreement with the Y on that property for the Aquatic Center?
Yes, there's an agreement that is not for the operations, but is for the lease of the land.
Okay, so if we drop the 28E, they have no recourse to raise our rent? Okay, so if we drop the 28E, they have no recourse to raise our rent, right?
That would be a whole separate agreement that would have to be looked at if they wanted to bring that forward, yes.
But they have the right to bring that forward.
I'm not sure what the termination language is in that.
Because I'm just thinking, common sense, if I'm the Y and I lose $15,000 a year, I think your rent goes to $15,000 a year, since we built the aquatic center on their property.
And I don't believe there's a current rent charge in that at all, so... But I don't have a copy of that agreement and can't speak to the specific terms and conditions.
I think it'd be wise of this council to get that confirmed before I drop the 28E agreement with them. Thank you.
Other comments?
One item I just would like to say is that if you do table this tonight, then we would probably be looking at not being able to terminate contractually for the next year, and would be needing to start planning 2019.
So, we could do that. Table it. See if this year gets any better with all of these proposed changes. We've been talking about this for years, working with the high school. I know Al, Mr. Hoop's brought that up.
Those days might be gone. When Carolyn left.
Yeah, she was my teacher.
I think the single most important issue here is the wages. Somehow, we have to find a way to budget and increase the wages where we take those lifeguards away from the other ones, instead of them taking ours.
And that is something that we're very well aware of, that we will probably face the same recruiting issues. And so, yes, as we would go through the budgeting process, we would be at $10 an hour. And then, if there were to be senior staff who would return, or those who had years of experience prior with the Y, we would look to start them at a higher level, just in honor of those prior years of service. And so, that was something that, again, we did make that change, we made it late. I was told prior to the start of the season that there would be no issue with having enough staffing, and that was not brought into... No wages were brought into that conversation at that point in time. And so, it was never brought to my attention by anyone from the Y that that was going to be an issue. And so, that's where we did make that change, and we made it too late in the season. And so, that's certainly our mistake, which we wouldn't make again in the future.
I would... I'd like to make a comment that I think if we go ahead and vote to cancel the contract tonight, so you can make the notification, that doesn't give us... Doesn't say that we can't, in two months, if we can't hire a new aquatic... A new Park and Rec director that has all the background that we have, that we couldn't go back to the Y and negotiate a contract to do it again. I think the next time, and if we need to do that, that's why I was concerned that we hadn't hired the new person yet. We're going to dump... We're putting some requirements on a new person that we hope we can get. But if we can't get him, we need to be able to go back to the Y and do some negotiating. And like Al said, we need to get our wage rate up where we're picking the best and letting the rest of them go somewhere else. And we're... So we're full all the time, and we don't have a problem with not having help.
And I should clarify, Jenny Hart, who is our recreation supervisor, she does have her certified pool operator licensing. And so, we have one on staff currently. And the idea of having two is just that it's nice to have that redundancy, so Jenny can take time off during the summer as well, and that you still have somebody who's able to fulfill those daily requirements of operating the pool. So, that's where it's needed. I would say it's needed that if we move forward with taking on operations ourself, we would want two certified pool operators at least, to be able to make sure that we have the capability of operating this ourselves.
Yeah, I understand that, but my comment was if we... That's why I wish that person was already on board. So, we could vote tonight to allow you to cancel the contract, but if we can't find the right person for that Park and Rec job, we could always go back to the Y and renegotiate a new contract. We always have that option? Try to. Thank you.
Yeah, scheduling can really be a nightmare for someone. And it's going to be a lot of staff time to schedule people. Not just the hiring, but the, you know, the actual day-to-day. That's my only concern. Part of me is fine with change. And part of me says it's really a difficult time, because we have this gaping hole in our staffing, that department head position, so... We do have a motion and a second, any other comments, or... Any other action? Any other public comment? Okay. I think we're up to roll call, then, on terminating the agreement. I suppose it's... Well, yeah, roll call, please, and I suppose I'm first.
No, Isom?
No.
Lamer?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
So that carried. And that got us out of the existing agreement, and we'll see what happens. And we may want to try to negotiate something new. Okay. We're up to discussion items. The first is the sale of city property through request for proposal process. This is for 1220 and 26 East State Street, that's the first.
Yes. As we talked about earlier tonight with the setting of the public hearing on the sale of 22 North Center Street, we used a request for proposal process for that, which basically gives you the ability to determine what is in the public's best interest besides cost. You don't have to use cost only. And so, I brought up the memo here to kind of show you the properties that we're talking about. We had this conversation, you know, kind of last meeting, related to the Senior Citizen Center and that property, that we had some interest in it, from some of the developers, who would be seeking to apply for a low-income housing tax credit project, which would be family-based or senior-based. And so, there has been a conversation with the developer about 1220 and 26 East State Street. I should say 20 East State Street as a cleared lot, not with the building standing. And so, that's where they would like to know if you are interested in selling, and our way to basically determine that would be if you would like to... If anybody would like to make a motion to put those three lots out for a request for proposal process. We would then have a public hearing notice coming back before you on October 22, which would then have a public hearing being held at the November 26 city council meeting. So, I didn't know if you want to take these individually, or talk about them together?
Do we have to have a sale of the lots before they can make their application?
Michelle will answer that.
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. So, we spoke about this a little bit at a previous meeting, the low-income housing tax credit. The pre-application is November 1. Developers do not have to have site control, is the way IFA, Iowa Finance Authority, states things, but certainly, they do have to also prepare their documents for IFA related to what their project will look like, what the site development would be, their costs associated. So in order to give a good projection for consideration, they need to have a pretty solid idea of where they would be going for a project. So, given our timeframe at this point, they won't have site control by November 1. Our thought was that if, at the October 22 meeting, you have received proposals, similar to the conversation tonight about the police building, you would have the opportunity to at least have selected from proposals received prior to the 22nd, still providing an opportunity through the public hearing process to make a different decision in November. Or if things don't work out and they decide that they can't submit, you know, it opens us back up to consider other options. So, it would provide some direction to a potential developer to know whether or not they are in consideration of sale and acceptance, without giving a firm certainty on it. I don't know if that helps.
All we're going to get is proposals from developers on how much they're willing to pay us for these sites, and then we will pick from those proposals, because there could be more than one.
There could be more than one.
But that wouldn't be the sale price, that would just be...
Well, again, similar to what you saw today with the police building, is it would include a price, and it would include that purpose. So it is going back to that purpose. So a developer likely would say, I'm proposing a senior project of so many units.
All we're doing is giving... He's coming to us to get a fair market value on what he's going to have to pay for that piece of property to build a senior housing unit.
Looking to see if you're interested in that property, and yes, what that value would be. And we may have other interested parties that come forward that aren't housing developers, looking for that tax credit, if opened up for consideration. So you certainly may have multiple proposals before you that aren't tax credit-related, that you would be looking at and may decide to go a different route completely. And then at least the developer there, too, would know that that's not an optional site for them.
Are we only thinking of combining all three of them, or also having the proposal for individual lots as an option for proposal? Because I think that would be beneficial.
I do, too.
We could list it anyway, if you wanted to, you know, accept proposals on the individual use or all three of them combined, or two combined, we could put that out there, however you would like to do that.
I think if we move forward, I would prefer that it would be individual lots, and if somebody's interested in two versus three, or all three, or just one, that would be an option for request for proposal.
Yeah, I think I like that idea.
Okay, other questions for Ms. Spahnheimer about that one?
So have we got more than... We got a couple people looking?
You know, there's a lot of activity downtown, as we know, with buildings' futures changes. And so, I wouldn't be surprised at anything to come forward. I wouldn't necessarily say that I have multiple tax credit projects proposed for a single site, but there may be other commercial interest.
Oh, okay. Then could we include the next one in the same?
Yeah, I was going to say, if you would want to include them in the same motion, but they're kind of two separate things, so that's where we did want to give each one its sort of full due in terms of conversation.
So each one, and we list each lot separately?
If that's what your direction is, then, yeah.
I think that'd be... Yeah, I'm good with that.
Ms. Waltermeyer, did you want to speak to this one? 2020, 1220 and 26 East State? You can come up now.
I'm still Kathy Waltermeyer. I thought it was nice that you listened to our concerns about the senior center. Until I realized you were planning to sell the building before you ever voted on the first one. It kind of makes you think of the widow that holds her husband's funeral before he's even been buried.
Other comments on that one?
The only other comment I would have is that we have a few parking lots that are in here, and we already have discussed parking downtown. And so, eliminating that, I think needs to be a discussion point as well, if we do put this out for RFP.
Yeah, I think that's something that we would have to look at, and that's actually, the request for proposal for the downtown master plan has been issued. And there is basically a section in there that we're looking to be covered as part of that, related to parking. Not only, you know, how do you park? Is it parallel parking? Is it, you know, diagonal parking? All of that, but also looking at how many parking lots do we have? And what spaces are available? And is that meeting the needs that we have now, short-term and long-term? And if not, then what does that look like? And so, that's where, those would all be things that we would see being addressed in the downtown master plan. So, I would think, too, potentially, that this would be something where, if you did agree to sell these lots to a developer, that that could be something that would be looked at as part of that scope of work.
Ms. Botter?
Lee Botter, 401 Orchard Drive. I do respect the fact that you had to make the decision regarding where you're going with Senior Citizens Center. As a licensed insurance agent, I would encourage you to go back to the adjusters to see if you can get more than... I figured up it's about 24% of the policy value that you brought up earlier, that they're getting for the Senior Citizens Center. On this particular slide, my concern is, we're paying for the demo. Okay, can we not? And this is a question that brought up, several of us discussed before. Can the demo not be part of that whole process? Here, you're buying the land, you get to demo it. There's the $600,000, $800,000, a million, whatever you do to renegotiate, that can go towards the Senior Citizens Center. It's a thought. I'd encourage to renegotiate a little bit, please.
Thank you.
The one problem I can see with, if we don't take the building down, if we leave it there, the project may be dead in that lot. Because that's over a half-million dollars in expense, probably, they probably would pull out. I understand. I looked at that, too.
I would confirm that the one developer we have spoken to on that site would not want it with the building on there, because of the huge entry-level cost into, you know, a project. These are low-income housing tax projects, they're not meant to be making, you know, lots of money. They're meant to be serving a purpose of providing housing for seniors or families within our community. And most of them could not sustain, even to purchase a property at a $500,000 rate would be probably killing their rents that they would have to charge.
Correct.
Okay, next is two...
Do you want to step up?
You're hiding behind the TV there.
Yeah, my name's Jim Lonat, 610 North Fourth Avenue. I got a question on a senior citizen property. You're talking about these three lots, are they all the senior citizens? Is that what you're talking about?
If you look behind, or at this picture, there's a parking lot... Oh, right in front of you, too, on the computer.
Does that include the one that has the old garage? It used to be a Chevrolet cleanup center at one time, way back in the day. I mean, I'm old, but...
This is right out here.
That's not that part.
There's a city...
Is the front of it a hoop? Is it the front of that building? Okay, so you got the three lots, I know what lots you're talking about. Okay, my question is, what was that building really worth prior to the tornado?
The senior citizens?
The senior citizen hall. What was it worth? Does anybody know?
I don't think so.
Nobody knows, right? But we was insured for $3 million, right? And we're going to settle for $600,000 and $500,000 of demolition. So we're walking away with $100,000, going to wash our hands and walk away with $100,000. My next question is, what's all three of them lots worth? Anybody know? What are they worth?
I believe there is an assessed value to all of them, and if you'll give me a moment, I can bring all of that up. I want to say that the senior citizens... So the county assessor by state law is required to charge us, or provide an assessment for government-owned property. However, because we are tax-exempt, we do not pay that. I can tell you the parking lot at... Let me see here. That one is 12 East State Street is currently assessed at, with the land and the improvements, improvements being payment, at $40,500.
You say improvements, you're talking about the demolition of the building.
No, improvement in terms of assessment.
Just for the lot, right?
Yeah.
Forty-two, okay, that's one.
And then the senior citizens' building and land was assessed at $54,500. And then the parking lot at 26 East State Street is assessed at $31,910.
So we're talking probably about what, $127,000, something like that, somewhere in there, 125? I don't, I can't add it up that quick, but I'm pretty close. So we're gonna get like 125 if we sell all the three lots, if we get what we want for them from the developers. And we're gonna walk away with 100,000, right? Off the demolition. So that's like 225, we're walking away, clean our hands, wash our hands of this thing. What I'm trying to tell you is that a building's worth more than that. It has to be worth more than that fixed up. Why don't we fix it up? And if you don't want to use it for a senior citizen hall, why doesn't the city sell it and make some money off of it? That's what, it just doesn't make sense what you're doing here. I mean, you got a prime piece of property here, right in the center of the town. It'd been a good real location for the fire department and police department, but things didn't happen that way. But that's a high dollar piece of property there. It has to be. It's worth more fixed up than it is torn down. That's what I'm trying to tell you. That's what I tried to tell you from the start. It just don't balance out. I mean, it's pretty cheap what you're getting out of that prime piece of property there. Am I pretty close on that, 125?
I wasn't adding it up.
You're not adding it up, are you? Yeah. But I mean, that's all I can say about it. I think that, I think you ought to at least reconsider it because what are we gonna do? What are we gonna do with that money at 225, what I'm saying? Are we gonna invest it back in a senior citizens' hall or are we gonna just divvy it out to every different departments in Marshalltown? Have we thought about this? I mean, we're making a lot of decisions tonight up here, a lot of decisions, like this guy earlier said about the boiler system and the hot water heater and stuff. Wouldn't it be cheaper to rent it out to them and pay all that money? It sounds to me, then you're doing the Y, you're canceling out on the Y for $15,000. It don't sound like you guys are running the checkbook very good. And it sounds like this town's in need of some money. And we're looking at the fastest way to get that money. And I think we ought to back up, take another look at things. That's all I'm asking, telling you.
I think I would just like to add, if I could, that we have been looking at a number of these projects. It's not something we're looking at quickly or anything that we're looking at without putting a lot of thought and research into those items.
You couldn't even tell me what that senior citizens' building's worth prior to the tornado. So you didn't do your homework very good evidently.
We have looked at that building and the cost of updating it to meet the ADA codes.
I understand what this gentleman was saying about the money it's cost them to run it. But that's not their fault, that's our fault, isn't it? Not updating stuff.
I do wanna say, you said you hadn't come to a lot of the meetings previously, and this is something that we've looked at very, very hard. And we've looked at the different options. And we truly are trying to make the best fiscal responsibilities and the fiscal decisions for the community.
That's your opinion, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Dimerly.
Good evening. Again, Tom Dimerly, 1103 West State Street, Director of Marshall Economic Development. I've been working with Michelle, Jessica and the city staff along with all these developers that have been looking at the community. I think one thing to point out about these particular lots, and this isn't a debate about the senior center or not, is that currently these three lots aren't on the tax rolls. And so as we're considering potentially working with these developers, these are for-profit companies that will be paying taxes. And so there is an element of fiscal responsibility from that front as you look at these projects. So I just wanted to point that out and say thank you for your consideration because we gotta strike while the iron's hot here a little bit. And there's a lot of developers floating around.
I guess I would also like to add that we know there's a housing shortage in our community, and that is one of our top strategic plan items to provide moderate priced housing. And before the tornado, we had talked about the senior center previously. So it was not a rushed decision because it was, had damage from the tornado. But it seems to me to be an opportunity to provide housing. I think we have been clear that we will support our center, our seniors, and provide another place that they can work in, whether it's within the Coliseum or we've talked about different options. But that's something that I think we are all dedicated to, making sure we provide services for our seniors as well as if we can provide housing for the folks in our community. I think that's a win-win for everybody.
I guess I would just piggyback on that, that we had a housing opportunity, is what I always liked to put it as. Certainly was an issue before the tornado. And no doubt, given the nature of many of the properties that were impacted, it's going to continue to be an even bigger opportunity looking down the road. So with this allocation of affordable housing credits, this is an opportunity to get two or three decent sized developments going here in the community to really chip off a big chunk of that new opportunity that exists while we continue to address the existing opportunity. So, thank you.
Could I ask you a question? I'm gonna put you on the spot. Down in the area in the northeast part of town where we had major damage to these houses and stuff, if we could get an area down there, what's the chances of getting some low-cost housing built down there?
That is actually, there are sites under consideration in that area.
Oh, good. Okay, thanks.
Without going into the detail too far, there are sites under consideration down there.
Perfect, thank you. Thanks, Tom.
Other comments?
I'd like to ask a question.
Sure.
Linda Clark, 306 South Second Avenue. The city council makes decisions here with city-owned property. How do you come up with a decision to demolish one, sell another? It's confusing to me when youth and shelter services is looking for a place to purchase. Having been in the building at the senior citizens' center, it is in far better repair. I don't understand why wouldn't he be offered to purchase that building, which he could put his youth and shelter services in there? And I very well know everything was working well. You heard Ms. Waltermeyer say that the asbestos and all that was removed. He would be getting a far better building with that building, but you have voted to demolish it, which makes absolutely no sense to me at all, throwing away the $1.2 million to bring it up, which you didn't even get contractors to even say. You made up your mind a long time ago it was gonna be wiped out. But I feel sad that he couldn't be offered that building to purchase or someone else could be offered because I know it isn't in that much need of repair. That's the last comment.
Thank you. So this is still the sale of city property through request for proposal process, just to make it clear. Okay. Next property is 213 East Main Street.
This is, again, another city parking lot that is located on the south side of Main Street. And you can see it labeled on the map there. It sits between Hammer Medical Supply and...
Building that has numerous businesses owned by Denny Gray.
East Gate Mall.
What was it?
East Gate Mall.
East Gate Mall, thank you. So again, very similar situation as we just described, interest in potential of this site as well. And again, just kind of being able to provide direction to developers on how to proceed with possible applications.
Can you tell us what is the status of the buildings that I assume are at 211 and 200, or the other two buildings on adjacent to that?
So the corner is the Marshalltown Senior Residences, the Iowa Wholesale Building, which obviously did sustain damage. We know that. The developer there is certainly looking at all options with regards to rehab of spaces. Most likely they're preferred, what I anticipate. But they are considering all options, which could have meant a complete demolition as well. So we certainly hope that the rehabilitation is the opportunity that's put forward. The building adjacent, the East Gate, you know, has the potential to be acquired as well or demolished or rehabbed. That is something that the owner would have to make some of those decisions, and that may depend on some of these actions that the council considers. So without providing a whole lot of detail at this time, I just say that there are multiple different ways that any of these other lots may play out depending on what might be available to a developer.
Any questions for Ms. Von Heimer?
Do we have any kind of a timetable when we're gonna get a decision on what they're gonna do on the building?
Well, again, I think what, we're large to the Marshalltown Senior Residences, I think a lot of that will depend on some of the action that is taken here tonight. And moving forward, if you decide to put out a request for proposal and accept proposals for sale of that property, would depend on some of the actions that they may take.
Okay, I can read between the lines, I got it.
Does, how does the sale of that lot affect parking for events either at the Orpheum or for the other businesses along that block?
Certainly that is probably one of the bigger questions as councilman ISOM is related to the parking. Parking is something that we will be looking at with the downtown redevelopment plan. The two lots that are just to the east of there are hospital-owned parking lots. You know, would there be opportunity for use for public events and things there? That certainly might be something that could be approached with Unity Point for consideration. Looking at all of our parkings surrounding the downtown and what is serving where is something that we need to look at. I would, you know, we've talked about this at the last meeting, you know, do you put everything on hold until that plan is done? I don't necessarily think is the best option to do. We don't want to stop some great opportunities that are before us, but we recognize that we do have needs that will move forward. So we gotta take all that into consideration as best we can. But I would encourage the council to seriously consider these options before them to at least provide an opportunity for housing developers to think about how they could rebuild. Certainly, things may not work out. It's a very competitive process, too, at that. So we may have five or six applications that go before the Iowa Finance Authority, and maybe only one will be successful. And, which would put some of these other projects then, you know, back in our hands as something else to look at. So it is a very competitive process, and there are no guarantees with it, and we may not know those award announcements until the springtime. So we have time to make some decisions as we move forward through developments and planning processes.
Any other questions about 213 East Main Street?
So are we asking for action at this point?
A motion in order to direct staff to issue. So I will entertain a motion to direct staff to issue a request for proposals for 12, 20 and 26 East State and 213 East Main with the intention of having a resolution at the October 22nd council meeting for consideration. So there would be a formal resolution that we would vote on.
And that would be a motion to set a public hearing, just to be clear. It wouldn't be a final sale. It would be to set a hearing, but it would give direction to those developers looking to submit.
Yes.
I move what you said.
Okay. You got that? Ms. Kinzer?
Yes, I did.
Okay, great. Been moved and seconded.
Was that ISOM with the second? Yes.
Okay. Okay. Roll call, please.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
ISOM?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
We're in.
Yes. Okay. And our next discussion item is a follow-up on open burning. One of Mr. Lamer's favorite topics, apparently.
Good evening. David Reiers from Marshalltown Fire Department.
Good evening.
So back in September, I came to you looking for some direction on open burning. And this was in relationship to us updating our fire code, going from the 2006 edition to the 2015 edition, because open burning is discussed in the fire code. At your direction, I was asked to solicit information from citizens as to what their feelings were on this. So I constructed a survey tool. It was shared, or a media release was put out to the newspaper, to the radio. The survey was put on the city's website. Social media was shared with other organizations in town to share with their memberships. And I'm going to give you the results of that survey. So we had 566 people responded to the survey. Ten questions were asked. The first five had to do just with the, some questions about burning. And then if they answered the question, they did not want open burning to continue, then they were shut off from the survey because the rest of the questions had to deal with particulars about burning. So the first question was, is had they ever burned yard waste? Seventy-five percent said yes, 25% said no. They were asked if they had ever called 911 or the fire department directly for an open burning complaint. Seventeen percent had and 83% had not. They were asked if the fire department had responded to their residents on a complaint. Nine percent said yes, 91% said no. They were asked if anyone in their household suffered from a respiratory condition. Thirty-one percent answered yes, 69% said no. They were asked should the city continue to prohibit burning of garbage? Eighty percent said yes, 20% said no. They were asked if the city should continue open burning of yard waste? Seventy-four percent responded yes, 26% responded no. So at that point in time, they would have been cut off if they said no. So should the city shorten its burning period? Twelve percent said yes, eighty-eight, excuse me, 88% said no. So they were asked if the time period was shortened, what would be their timeframe preference? Seventy-five percent, they wanted to remain the same. Next highest one was 20%, 20% was from April 1st to May 31st and October 1st to November 30th. And there were a couple other ones, but they were very minimal in response. They were also asked if the hours were allowed to be changed, what would they prefer? The most preferred timeframe was 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, followed by 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And then they were asked if the city should only allow burning in a covered container? And 16% responded yes and 84% responded no. So in regards to the changes in the fire code, previously in the 2006 edition, it said that open burning was prohibited and that if anybody found it to be offensive and objectionable, that the fire had to be extinguished. And my comment to you was as if we have an ordinance that allowed it, and if they were doing it legally, if somebody called and complained about it, that per the fire code, if they found it objectionable, we had to extinguish it, which put us in a position of being a civil arbiter between neighbors. In the 2015 fire code, it took out the, it take out the language offensive and objectionable and placed in there when atmospheric conditions or local circumstances make such fires hazardous. That is what will be in the new fire code. So by talking about atmospheric conditions, they're talking about air temperature, they're talking about wind, and they're talking about humidity. So obviously, when you have a higher air temperature, materials dry out, they burn faster. If there's wind conditions, the extra oxygen that fuels the fire and actually spreads the firebrands. And then humidity, when you have higher humidity, the moisture content in your material is obviously, is lower, so it burns faster. The other thing that I took into consideration was people who have chronic obstructive lung diseases. And based on the survey responses, 31% of the people that responded have some type of respiratory condition. have some type of respiratory condition. And those conditions are exacerbated by extremes of temperatures, so cold weather and heat, and then humidity, and then smoke, and smoke are among the things that exacerbate their conditions. So based on survey results, and what people have called and talked to me on the phone about, and have stopped me on the street and talked about, these are going to be the recommendations that I'm going to make. I'm going to recommend that open burning continue to be allowed, that the burning of garbage remain prohibited, which is no change from our current policy. I'm going to recommend that the burning dates be restricted from April 1st to June 30th, and from October 1st to November 31st. By doing that, I'm excluding the months of July, August, and September, those timeframes, when we have higher temperatures, and we have varying humidity levels that we know are going to cause higher, a greater chance for fire and fire spread. It also takes into consideration those residents that have respiratory conditions. Because we're short, because I'm recommending that we shorten the burning timeframe, I'm going to change the burning hours as well. And following the responses of 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, those would be the illegal, the legal allowed burning time. And that would be daily, Sunday through Saturday. Right now, we don't, we don't burn afternoon on Saturday, and we don't burn at all on Sundays. By shortening the timeframe, we open up and they can burn on Saturday and Sunday. And that was some discussion I had with people on the street that said, hey, I work Monday through Friday. I don't have time to do this. I want hours extended on the weekends. There'll still be no burning on holidays, which is currently in our policy. And then we will add that burning prohibited, burning prohibited when atmospheric conditions make such fires hazardous. So wind speeds greater than 15 miles an hour, and extended dry weather conditions. And then we'll keep the language on 50 feet from a structure if it's on the ground, and 15 feet from any structure if it's in an enclosed container. Obviously, those are just my recommendations. The council, you know, can direct me in a different direction than that, but that is my recommendation. I take any questions?
Any questions for Chief Ryerson?
One of the things that I think you just skipped over, it says you're recommending one family dwelling units only.
And that is what's in our current code.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, that was my question.
I know there's no, I know there's no right answer, or no one specific answer that's going to make everybody happy, but in proposing this, I try to take everybody, everybody's concerns and thoughts into consideration.
So the dates were April 1st to June 30th, and then October 1st to November 30th? Okay.
I do think it's great to have some data in front of us of what people, you know. I appreciate that you took the effort and took the recommendation to talk with folks and give us some, to help formulate this, to see the best way to go. I appreciate that.
You know, and I surveyed what other, what other cities around the state are doing, too, and it was a wide variation of not allowing burning at all, to only allowing one day a week, to just three days a week, and then only a couple months a year. So it was just a wide variation of different policies throughout the state.
Okay. So Chief Ryerson is looking for probably a motion to put this on the next agenda, October 22nd?
No, I'm just looking for direction from the council. If this is, if this is, is agreeable to you, we still have to amend and adopt the fire code. I just need to know how the open burning ordinance needs to change so that we can include it in the adoption of the new fire code.
Do we actually need to?
I'm not looking for a motion. I'm just looking for direction.
I would say we probably would be looking for a motion to formally provide that direction so that there's clarity that there is at least four in support of this at this point in time and moving it forward into that larger ordinance.
I would move, I would move that we give direction to the fire chief to accept the proposals that he's put through.
Have a second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Comments from the council or questions? Public comment? This is a discussion item, but...
And one thing to make clear is that when this does come back as an ordinance amendment, ordinances do require three readings, and so that will be there for, for public comment as well with those three readings.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
We're in.
Yes. Okay. Third quarter strategic plan update is the final topic.
I will keep this very brief. The third quarter, which is July 1st through September 30th, included a tornado that really threw us off in terms of things that we had hoped to move forward and advance in, in terms of working on. One of the things that we'll be doing here upcoming is another strategic planning session where I think all of, everything needs to be reevaluated in light of where we are. So I didn't want it to be any sort of secret that we certainly are not on target with a number of items, but really, I think those items are still left to be considered as to whether or not they're of the same importance now as they were prior to July 19th. And so I'll leave it at that if there's any, unless there's any specific questions.
Okay, any questions?
No.
No? Okay. I think we're good. So now's the time for public comment. If there are issues that you want to speak to that we did not cover in the meeting, please approach the lectern and give your name and address for the record.
This is Gary Thompson, 601 East Main Street. This is the main reason I came tonight. I sent you all an email last Friday. Hopefully, you all got it. Concerning, please set some guidelines for the construction companies, demolition companies that are operating in town. As we all know, insurance companies are now starting to settle. Work has begun. And it's my understanding that we are going to try and operate under a policy of do unto others as you would have them do unto you. I'm a believer in good fences make good neighbors. I think the council needs to establish an ordinance to direct these companies on what is fair and equitable about the closing of streets, keeping in mind the safety of their workers, but also keeping in mind that they are not operating in a vacuum. If, if I read the ordinances correctly, we have nothing on the books that detail this, but we actually have contradictions in there of what our current policy is of this do unto others, as to who really has the authority to legislate this in town. I did not hear back from any of you earlier today. When I checked my email, I did hear back from Joel. Joel did confirm he does not have a vote, but he had an opinion. And his opinion was, we just all need to be patient, and we had a tornado, and everyone should be patient. Well, I'm here to ask Chief Ryerson, if, if the Max Building had, had construction to be done, and they closed off all of First Avenue there north of the fire station, and then Diamond Paint, their retail store, had damage, and they closed off all of First Avenue south of the fire station, how patient would the chief be with getting his trucks out? But the current policy would allow that, from 8:00 in the morning until 5:00 at night. There's nothing that says they could not do that if it was in the best interest of the safety of their workers. And I'm asking, alls I'm asking for you is to take this under consideration, put some guidelines, and I don't have to agree with them, but put some guidelines in place on what is fair and equitable for everybody in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon? Come on up. Don't be shy. It's after eight.
Yeah, I figure I've sat here long enough. Dwayne Dixon, 200 South 11th Street. Couple issues I'd like to kind of bring up that have never, or haven't really been on the board or on the agenda lately. Dilapidated properties and structures. How is, is there any public way of recommending, recommending structures for evaluation? And if so, how do you go about doing that? It's not really clear on the city website. Two in particular would be 602 West Boone Street and 519 South Fifth Street. Both of them have been basically in dire straits for better part of two years or more. So somebody just needs to look at them. A lot of people drive Center Street and the Viaduct. Is there any chance of getting a city engineer to take a look at the two expansion gaps? Basically, they've been out of alignment for several years, pretty much since it was rebuilt in 2007. And as Highway 14 is being rebuilt over the next year or so, is there any chance of getting rid of the two, or the one-way streets, particularly Church and Lynn, and modernizing them to become actually practical streets?
Yes, yes, and yes. All of those things are being discussed and have been recently.
That's all I got.
Thank you. Any other? Okay, please step up. Don't be shy. You can line up if you like to. We're at that point in the agenda.
Good evening, John Blabam. I don't live in town, but I'm a business owner. 108 and 110 West Main. Gary came up and addressed what I'm going to address, too. I've seen Gary more than I've seen anybody else since the tornado, asking what help do you need? How's your business? How are you working? What problems do you have? I love him to death for doing that. Right now, we're trying to run a business at odds and ends, and we're actually ecstatic at 108 and 110. What he was addressing was the construction that we have going on across the street at McGregor's, the bike shop, and that entire block. Currently, Bricon is blocking our street from not 8:00 to 5:00, but 7:00 in the morning until 5:00 or sometimes after, when the weather's nice. We have no parking. We have no access to our business whatsoever. And him addressing the ordinance, or what do we have in place for construction companies just willy-nilly blocking streets off? They have put up a "Street Closed" sign and hung a hand-printed "One Way Street" sign below the stop sign at the corner of First and Center. We have customers that don't even think we're open. And it's the same thing for the antique shop. They have told us, Bricon has said, that they are going to be working for about eight to possibly 12 months. We look at this as really unfair. Today, as a matter of fact, there's been a dumpster that's been sitting on our side, taking up parking spaces. The new meter reader, or person that checks parking, was actually out to give tickets to people parking in front of our business today because they were over the line. Well, the only way they can park, it's over the line, because we have a dumpster sitting on our side that's for construction on the other side of the street. My business partner, Warren Wolken here, who's run for about 18 years, odds and ends, and I've partnered with him for four years now, he went outside to say, hey, we're at a disadvantage here. We get nothing. I've talked to Justin Nickel. I've tried to find out, you know, what are our options? We just get, it's a good neighbor policy. Well, the good neighbor policy is going to kill us. If it continues with street blockages for the next eight to 12 months, we won't have a business. And talking about Marshalltown Strong and rebuilding the downtown and making it good, we've, we've stuck money into our business. We want to be there. I've spent $30,000 fixing my business and want to rehab the apartments and make it a nice place. But I won't be able to do that because I won't have the money, because we depend on traffic and parking. We don't have it down around the corner, along the Ibiza nightclub. They have put up fences that block the parking spaces. It goes out into the street. Oops, sorry. Out into, I talk with my hands. It goes out into the street, and it's taken up parking spaces there. We've had to do new marketing just to tell people where they can possibly park. So I'm asking that something, somewhere be done, you know, whether it's an ordinance or clarification on what construction companies can do. I don't think I should be able to go out and just block a street and say that I'm working on it. And then, as I look forward, how does snow removal work in that block? How are we going to do that? I'm asking for some consideration for our business and the other businesses on that block. I don't know what can be done, but if some public official within here, the fire department, the police department, public works director can actually get that fixed and work with Bricon, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other public comment tonight?
Okay, Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. I have a question about the red stickers that's been placed on all these buildings that are supposedly, and homes that are supposedly damaged and all this stuff. We've placed them on just the ones in the tornado district, but they're being placed there under Chapter 7 ordinance. Why are they not being placed on other buildings like 1001 South 10th Avenue? Or the house on Meadow Lane, about 300 block that's had a fire? Or these other delinquent properties? Why are we not using that ordinance and those little red stickers on all those other buildings?
Thank you. Any other comments? Going once? Okay, all right. Meeting is adjourned.